Why are you wearing that?
My son has one with David on it.
That's what I was gonna say.
Why would not wear?
I would frame it and save it for later days.
I wanted to frame it because it's worth more.
Yeah, well, it would be worth more in 20, 30 years. I won't let my son wear his, but he's probably too big for them now or too big for him now.
I heard you said the girl, what's your street name?
Do not know your address.
Well, 457 49th Ave.
I think the whole cul-de-sac there is considered the A. Pretty sure. I guess that makes it dog leg, but I don't think part of it's a street and part of it's, I think the whole thing is just considered the A.
Well, last year I said that 49th Ave. That's my area.
All right, thank you very much. It is 7:02. I'd like to call the meeting for the regular council meeting from May 24th to order. First business is, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one under 4.1, call 4.1, report on Rollatavian 49th Ave. Does anybody have anything else?
Do you want to add the budget adjustment? Or just talk whatever the tax file?
We can talk about the tax file, sure. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda with the one addition?
I make the motion to accept the agenda with addition of 4.1.
Okay, John, on favor? That is carried. 3.0, minutes of April 26th, regular council meeting, minutes of May the 10th, many of the whole meeting. Any errors or anything anyone would like to bring forward? None? Can I have a motion to accept those minutes as is then?
I'll move the minutes of April 26th and May 10th.
Thank you, Tracy. All favor? 3.1, 3920 alternate decision. So when we set up the original committees back in, back in October, when we were sworn in for the 3920, we had all of the council as an alternate. And basically, we have to, we have to designate one person, the bylaws for 3920, they'll allow all those guys in there. So I'm just wondering if anybody has, anybody would let their name stand up like as an alternate?
I really don't have any extra names available.
Likely, likely, yeah.
Typically, 3920, we have two representatives from the municipality that are both expected to go to all the meetings. The problem becomes their bylaws state that if you don't have an alternate explicitly named and those two people are not available, you can't have someone else go. That's why we started doing the, everyone's an alternate because their own bylaws create a weird conflict. So yes, typically, their bylaws say that you have two appointed representatives from Thorsey, but then if there's not explicitly named alternates, they can't attend instead. If it's kind of poorly constructed by them.
Gotcha, but I mean, we would only send one person. We wouldn't send two to the meeting.
Their bylaws expect two people.
You do want to?
I don't, I don't, until, until I see some coherence what they're doing and why, I don't know that we should be sending anyone.
I know that, I know the meetings that I've gone to.
Have there been two from other communities?
Yeah, this side, well, it starts at Calmar, like to, I wish I could have a meeting here tomorrow. And it goes Calmar and then Thorsey, Waterbury and then Brad. And they've always had two people at every meeting.
That is what their bylaws represent. That's what they, that's what their bylaws on ours say is supposed to be.
And personally, clarify that tomorrow. Are you available tomorrow?
I'm not available tomorrow.
Well, I'm sure we can get away with it. But if you would put your name in it. John, you want to put your name?
Sure.
So then you need an alternate.
Yes, if an alternate is unnamed and you're both tied up, then nobody from Thorsey can attend if they're not explicitly named as an alternate. Well, but that's why the, hey, everyone is named as an alternate because it's came up before.
So you and Corey are going to be the, and then can the rest of us still be alternates or not?
They don't want that anymore. Two individuals, they want one.
One alternate? So are you going to do that?
I can, Corey.
Nobody, we're saying permanent.
I will do it if something, if either I want. If you guys need me to, I can, but I don't have any particular desire or ambition to do so.
Like, I mean, currently, I only have one active board. But what scares me is I have three boards that aren't active and if they get going, then I'm going to be like all in, right? So that's the only thing that worries me is we still have that youth committee, we have the healthy committee, and I have the FCS desk board. And those haven't been active.
Well, I guess that should be a variable, though. 3920 is typically Wednesdays. Who doesn't have prior commitments on Wednesdays, generally speaking, should be the bigger part of the equation.
Last Wednesday of every month, yeah.
So then would you and John be the two to go every meeting and Corey be the alternate?
Unless they, unless they say we can get away with it. So that's, we're okay with that for now, John? Can I have a motion to, for John Miller to be the designate for the 3920?
Sure, I'd move to appoint John, Councilor John Miller as Thorsey's secondary representative to 3920.
Thank you. All in favor? All right, 3.2, release the Thorsey Senior Society Fund. So John, you want to talk about that for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And April 28, 2016, the funds from the former seniors group were entrusted to the village at the time of Thorsey, and they were held in trust. And these funds were as a result of the dissolution of the former, former organization. And that it's been disbanded, yet the money still belongs to the seniors as they apply for the grants, this is grant money. The grants specifically state that it is for transportation and program planning.
No, no.
Yes, ma'am.
I was excited to say yes, program planning, you know, the captain, your time. And I know what happened. And some of that was bus problems and where your bus was told.
Correct, it's for transportation and program planning. The amount in the bank account that's been held is $27,084.12, that includes interest. Administration is requesting council return this money to the Thorsey Seniors Society. They are a properly formed society and group to use for their transportation, i.e. bus trips, et cetera, and any program planning as within the grant.
I guess the one thing is I know that there's been weird confusion and misunderstanding and nobody really seems to be on the same page, what's what and how. So whatever information we do have, I agree, this is silly that Thorsey is acting as an intermediary, but we should ensure that we forward along whatever information regarding grants or whatever, bus sales. The providence of the money, however we know it, we should forward that information along with it so that they can make informed decisions.
We will, and I have most of it here, Councilor Corey.
Pretty easy, I know there's been weird contention with it, but yes, it should be the seniors managing it now that they, they exist.
Hundred percent, yeah, I have the bylaw for the dissolution, I have the grant information, I have everything to be able to, to send to them, for sure.
Could I ask you, Pat, were you aware that we had this money? So you guys all knew all about it?
Okay.
That money was taken away because some councilors thought their kitchen was lost. And one of them was Gary Rash and was Charlie. And they told us, we have to turn that in because we weren't a regular board. And until they formed a new board, that money would be held in trust. We didn't give that money up.
Willingly.
Willingly, and I made sure it went into term, so they, nobody could spend it.
All right, so we're just returning it to, it's right to all of us, okay? I don't see any issues with that, and as I said, like Corey said, if we, we give all the paperwork you have with it, so be it. Can I have a motion to do so?
I would move by direction to administration to make arrangements to return the seniors' planning and transportation reserve funds to the seniors' society.
All in favor? That is carried. 3.3, proclamation of Pride Month. So John, if you'd lighten this on that one again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. June is Pride Month across the province and really across Canada. And for, it's widely considered and what the municipalities proclaim, the month of June, it's for LGBTQ, to I C, for identifying people. And we've probably followed it off of the proclamation. It's meant to educate and identify key issues that affect the LGBTQ population as well as tell the story, history, help our Canada's comp to accept LGBTQ citizens. We recommend that council bring the month of June as Pride Month.
I would happily move to provide direction to administration, or like, I guess, I would provide direction to the mayor to declare June as Pride Month, as well as direction to administration to include references, reference of it in any of the town publications or advertisements for the month.
3.4, FCM membership.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We kind of came across this when they sent us the invoice. Apparently, last year, you were a member of the Federation of Municipalities. And it's, it's a program designed to unite communities and drive federal investments into infrastructure, housing, transit, and more. It includes support for municipal colleagues, networking, has tools, tips, analysis, other options, has a conference once a year somewhere in Canada. It offers partial funding of innovative sustainability-related municipal projects. The membership fee is $368.09 for council consideration. It wasn't included in the budget.
It was or was not?
Was not. Yeah, I think there's room, but we just got the invoice, so we couldn't, we couldn't know where to ahead of time. We noted that the town was a member last year, so we're recommending you consider this in 2023, uh, 2022.
Just skipping over it.
Thorsey is a federal version of a U M.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So part of the problem is any of your council stuff are kind of far, far beyond. This year, it's actually just in China, they don't, China's just south, Saskatchewan somewhere. But I got things in Halifax or Quebec City.
So it's going to be like municipal, municipalities from across Canada.
Yes, so like I say, it's kind of an A U M, maybe federally, but it's not really practical for running a cellular site to actively participate. They do have access, I mean, there's some grants and stuff we've got from them in the past. And being a passive member seems fine, but an active member, we can't afford to be sending people on trips to Halifax and stuff.
Their, their grant was the one I had to turn back for $50,000, so it wasn't, it wasn't tested too correctly. It was 520,20.
So I'm guessing if we don't join, we can't apply for any grants.
True enough, yeah, yeah. Administration is, is a little ambivalent about it, in all honesty. Councilor Corey is quite right that they, they don't really pay attention to small municipalities. They really don't. They're after the everything Calgary, Toronto, Ottawa, Vancouver, Victoria, that stuff to their after. And that's why we put on there's a recommendation that you, you may consider this in 2023, consider it for next year, too, if you still wish, that's fine. We, we have a hard time valuing it, I guess, for, for this size of municipality right now. But if, if you believe that there may be an infrastructure grant coming down the pipe for it and it's what we're applying for, it doesn't have a matching, I told, because sometimes you have to match, and this last grant that I had to turn back was matching, then, then you certainly can't. So it's $358.09, we're just being prudent, but council could certainly be, you know, for rule, we're, we're good with that.
So if it wasn't in the budget for 2022, then we would consider putting it in the budget for 2023? And that's why you would say, consider it for 22?
Yeah, that's all.
I, I would move to just table it until we get to, I had your discussions in the fall for 2023. There's nothing pressing about us for right now, I don't think.
I would, I would totally agree, that's exactly what I was going to suggest, and that we just, we were so. We'll just table it and make a motion for that.
We will, we will, we will follow it on the, yeah.
And whether or not you're ever, you didn't keep doing the deal.
Next item on the agenda, 3.5, the RCMP quarter report. John, if you would please give us a scoop on that?
For sure, of course, as you know and you're aware, the Thorsey RCMP detachment provides a quarterly report. And administration and staff sergeants were forming a very good relationship about what's happening in the community. And this is Staff Moore's report on what they've done in the trend and what's going on. And it basically tells you all the financial, criminal data, et cetera. It's interesting that the RCMP are coming onto body cameras, police officers have been wearing it for the last four years by camera, Community Police Officers, Sheriff's, and others, which is interesting. They have a new app and some of our team has already downloaded the app through Apple or Google Play. And it provides all the community members who have not had access to these crime, attachment locations, et cetera. And we will post this out on the website and talk about it in the target as well. Also, of course, the app, the mobile app has been improved by the Office of the President of the Commission of Canada. And then basically, looking at the staff, there's, there's some statistics that have gone down, some are holding steady. If you look at offenses related to death, such as, you know, robbery, assault and so forth, there's, there's been a bit of an uptake. But it's down from 2018 to 2022, it's down there. There's kind of a V-shaped curve on criminal harassment, and that is everything from, it is not other interests, but it's criminal harassment is following from place to place, interrupting persons' place of work, stealing their tools, making it impossible for them to, to go freely through the community, that's criminal harassment. Usually, a lot of times, that's domestic concern. Break and enter is down 36%, which is, which is really good. Theft is holding steady at 20, and that doesn't surprise us.
This is only the first quarter, though, of this year.
Yeah.
I'm scared, yeah, actually.
Well, it's, I'm happy it's holding, actually, to be quite honest. Steps over 5,000, but no change. Steps under 5,000 is down, actually. Possession of stolen goods, you don't want to look at that one, skip over it. 114% is really, really high. There's a, there's like a triangle between Red, Thorsey, and Redley, which is interesting, always has been. Fraud is, is down, of course, arson, damage to property is down. If you look at offensive weapons, they're sitting at zero, disturbing the peace, failure to comply and breaches. But, you know, there's 175% change and so forth. And then you look at your drug enforcement, and there's some statistics that, of course, aren't categorized because it's production, it's mostly your possession and your tra, possession, trafficking, it's interesting, no stats there. Cannabis enforcement, there's, there's not much, not much action there. Your federal liquor, liquor act, your mental health act is a minus 45% change, but we believe that that, because of COVID and so forth, right, there's going to be a change. I, we were just talking about that today with staff, people figure that's going to go up in the next year. There's going to be some significant statistical increases. And your other provincial staffs are, all your other regulations that say import to the province. Municipal bylaws, traffic, non-municipal bylaws, they're, it's also saying they, RCMP step in and we can't. Injury, motor vehicle collision is interesting, it's a minus 80%. So there must be, there's a lot of good traffic information coming out. Property damage reportable is up, and property damage, motor vehicle collision, non-reportable is down. So that's anything under $2,000, you don't have to call the police, what that is. And eventually, the Community Police Officers will be investigating a collision damage, 2,000 and under with some injury. So that'll take that off the RCMP staff for the most part. So it's, for this quarter, actually, I'm not, I mean, you don't like any staff from RCMP, right? You want everything to be good, but considering, though, Thorsey is not as bad as one might, one might think. So Staff Sergeant has been very busy and, and he's, he's doing another event, I think tomorrow night. No, for sure.
For sure.
Thank you, yeah, the seniors, right? Yeah, I'm going to stay over and attend, I think, I think if you can attend, it's good because it'll, it's like the, the RCMP report for the, for the community, and I think it's a good one to, to stay for. And then they've done a lot of priority, one is their crime reduction, and there's a lot of property crime and staff's report speaks for itself. Their community rural unit continues to work in the Thorsey Brenner area. And there's just a list of, there's just a nest of little prolific criminals that are, they're absolutely causing havoc. Their priority, too, is communicate effectively, build and maintain positive relations with the community. And I did put a few meetings with Staff Sergeant Moore on Saturday when I was out here, had great discussions with two constables that were on shift at the community center. The one who constantly has been here three months, from Niagara Falls, and I said, must be a heck of a culture shock, and he goes, uh-huh. And I said, what do you like about Thorsey? And he said, you know what, I could talk to people, I don't have to rush, I'm not always on the go, I could sit, talk to people. And he was opening freezies for kids and, and, you know, they wanted to use his scissors in his vest. He said, that's not for cutting your freezer, but why not? Well, I use those scissors for other things, and, you know, it's been pretty good. Enhanced road safety, basically, they've done nine check stops. In fact, two Fridays ago, I came through one just on Glen Park Road, I drove towards the lake. And 73 check stops during a year is quite a few. And I know from my time working with the RIT Transportation, we get check stops with the RCMP. This is quite a few for that year, and it succeeded the goal of two from now on, so there's a lot going on. Your 21 and 22 crime staff, you can see the changes over the years, some are down, some are holding, some are up. And that's, that's easy for you to look at. They have 14, 14 established RCMP members in this detachment, 13 are working. One stop they can see, in other words, just off for either light injury, maternity, parental bereavement, whatever that is. And I was talking to the clerk this afternoon, the RCMP clerk, and she said, things are, things are holding pretty good, so that's good. Here's the app on this page, if you can download it, we certainly would encourage you to do that. Talked about it, so we'll be putting this in the, in the target. And I'm just going to be wearing their body cams. And this is the policy of when they'll activate their body cams, and they're pretty much the same as Community Police Officers. Basically, mental health calls, they don't turn them off for interactions with people in crisis, so someone's freaking out or someone's, you know, drowning, and those kinds of things. Crimes in progress, the court, investigation, public disorder, recording information to support the performance review. So basically, as soon as you get out of car, basically, it goes on, and then it's early life, typically, turn them off during the detachment or when they're in a meeting or something. So anyways, from, from administration's perspective, these staffs are holding. And Staff Moore and I are in contact for him to come to the council meeting in June to have a chat with you and talk about what's going on.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the report for information? 3.6, the sale and CFP contract extension decision. So we've discussed this here in camera here before. We've also just want to point out on the contracts here, that both these contracts are, there's two contracts, it's not a package deal. There's, there's one for CFO on the sale. The, the term was a minimum of five months, so at the end of May 31st, they're done. And then otherwise, they extended it with agreement. So we discussed and we came up with, I believe, is, what I wrote down was the standard contracts for the CEO and CFO until September 30, 22, as per the original contract, still being that. Counsel to establish job descriptions for CEO and advertise accordingly as soon as possible. In the event that a suitable candidate is selected prior to September 31st or, the starting date would be October 1st. So was there any discussion on that? Is that pretty much what we agreed on? Anybody have any comment on that?
I do recall that discussion, but then my next thought was, I don't think we've asked on our Cindy, if they want to stay on June 1st.
Well, you can ask them.
It's like an apart and parts of this equation.
Yeah, so we, we would have to have that discussion with you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I don't think it's fair to bring somebody in and out, but it's like trying to be honest, because it's still, you put yourself behind, if you want to know the truth, because they come in blind like we did. And yes, we've made progress, but not enough for somebody to just step into a role. My personal belief is, September's not long enough, because we need to establish the foundation. I want to set the next people up for success. It's not that I need this job, I don't. I have one that pays my bill. But when I started, I didn't realize it was as in bad shape as it is. And I, to come into this position and not know anything, like, I don't know what. There was no information as to what websites I need to be on to access information, what, like, no passwords, no, like, no nothing. Like, I'm basically in the dark and I'm leading my way through it. So I, my goal would be to set somebody up, and then when they come in, everything is in order, they can just sit down and pick up where I left off. And that's not going to happen by September, because the audit is going to take up a ton of my time. So there's no establishing all of the documentation that needs to be done. I mean, it's up to you guys, what you guys want to do, but I just think. I'm available, yeah, I am. My personal opinion, for whatever it's worth, is that this town has been a mess from, for a long time. And so to bring somebody in when it's not ready for somebody to just take over is setting you guys up for failure. So that's my professional opinion, my personal opinion. I don't like leaving a job half-done either. So I wouldn't want to hand it over to somebody unless it's 100% ready for them. So, and it's not going to be ready. You need a good, strong foundation to build upon, and if you don't have it, you're just going to crumble again.
Well, I respect the history and the matter of things. Everybody on the council, I think, most people know it's going to be a lock and order, and it's by something. Permanent first, if somebody's going to stay and care, it's a, it's a call order, right? And, and part of this thing is to start advertising right away, is because, as, as council and everybody says, it's going to take you three, four months. It's not going to, process is going to happen to the year's form.
You're going to stick somewhere, though, and.
That's correct.
And start the process.
Okay, that's right, and that's the whole intent of this, so you're going.
I would be calling to make any...
I wanna put you on the spot, but...
No, I, I, I have no problem being honest. My job is different than CFO Cindy. Uh, my job is building community relationships for one, and getting to meetings with the community and, uh, seeing what's going wrong, right? And we'll use, uh, agreements, uh, trail agreements, all those kinds of things have been on my plate. Uh, plus all the back, uh, built from issues from before, saying anything. We specialize in small town, that's what we do. And we're here to make sure Thorndyke's a success. I, I'm not here like Cindy for the money either. I'm here because I've seen Thorndyke struggle for years, and you do not have a solid foundation. You, we've got a, we've got a server to remap because it's all over the place, we can't find anything in it because nobody, not a file. And again, it's not a blaming, I'm, I'm giving my observation. We have bylaws that are filed by ma- by year, not by name. We don't know, uh, yet a hundred percent which are, which are assigned, which aren't. We know there's bylaw signs, we just have to find them, uh, because we shouldn't be operating without knowing where they are. We have policies that have to be reworked, I have to build your own financial policies, you only have one. I've got about nine more to build for you, free reserves and everything, and that takes time. We have, uh, we have, uh, grabs, I, I got three more requests from the government just this week, where is this, where is that? And I had to say to the government, gee, I don't know, can you send me the stuff and we'll work it through? We have a safety codes audit that was done in twenty nineteen or twenty, forgive me, the book's on my desk. Uh, there was an audit, apparently there's some things fixed, and the government's looking for that and to see if they are fixed. I've gotta be able to prove that they are or aren't, and that's gonna take some time because we're in credit safety code municipality. So there's all these things that have gotta be built from an administrative standpoint. Uh, we have, uh, uh, we certainly, uh, we're certainly interested in telling you that we want you to hold the line like we are with budgets and everything, so we can see where everything is, so we can give you proper advice. We're used to this proper advice for you and, and as well, uh, Cindy has that analysis as well. I have the industry of analysis, Cindy has the financial accounting analysis to tell you from a management perspective where you are. It's understood that you want a strategic plan, we can accomplish that for you within this contract as well for the next, uh, for the next budget. But I'm gonna be honest with you, uh, you may want to really look at your priorities and, and decide exactly what you're gonna do for at least another year. And, and that way we can build you up. You still, we still are waiting for the water grab, that, that's going to be a difference. So understand that, um, uh, if we were here for the money, a lot of times I'm here, maybe physically three days a week, less than the five days a week. And including Saturday, I'm happy to do that. We bear no issues of coming out, we bear no issues of working from seven in the morning, Cindy and I, a lot of times we're here at seven in the morning, so nine, ten o'clock at night. And we, we don't do that because we're showing off, we're doing that because we give it to our above source. And I will echo what Cindy said, uh, over the years, uh, administrative team, uh, have struggled. I will say they have struggled. Uh, we've got some situations with tax sales that we've gotta deal with, um, that you have the money for the tax sale, but the proper notices haven't gone out, uh, to deal with those tax sales. So there's all those kinds of things administratively and, and, uh, um, regulatorily wise, so that's the worst. Oh my God, anyways, uh, to, to deal with. We're, we're excited to work with this council and we have a very good staff team. They have a darn good administration team. And I, Cindy and I can't sit here without our administration team. These folks have stepped up to the plate. They have worked very, very difficult and under difficult circumstances, a lot of times with bail wire and barbed wire and twine. But there's nothing that these, this staff team can't do, and everything we ask of them to help us out, they do willingly, enjoy it. And, and it's tough looking, but they do. So, um, I believe we're building good rapport with the community. I believe that we're building good rapport with different groups, and it takes time. And I like Cindy wanna be able to leave here with everything laid out, everything done, so that your new CAO has to walk in the door and just go, I'm ready to carry this forward. And I agree, and it's not, Cindy and I have been, uh, collaborating, because we don't, we're too professional for that, but you're not gonna be ready.
I have a question, both of you guys. Based on where we are, what would the timeframe be? Obviously not a month, but ten years would be too long.
Yeah. Time frame, you guys be willing to hand it over and have someone...
You know, honestly, probably eighteen months.
Additional eighteen months or from?
From now, a total of, uh, from when we started. Yeah, so from when we started.
A negative.
I can tell you in Moreville it was eighteen months, Ruby was sixteen months, Curtis Pass was twelve. To be able to get it to where you want it, to be able to get it to where you need it. And I realize that may not sit well, I understand that, but it's one of our opinions, that, that's where we're at, right?
This discussion was had when, obviously, it's not a secret that there was some contention in the decision to end up in this place with a interim, interim administration. And this is exactly what I said, is if you do it that way, it won't be a short term, it won't be the initial five months. It'll turn into eighteen months is exactly what I said, because that's what happened. And I was very explicit that I'm not okay having an interim administration for eighteen months, and I was assured it was five. Now it's been five and we haven't even started the process. We need to start the process, and I'm not okay waiting eighteen months to start the process.
Absolutely, and that's what we're doing right now.
Well, based on the discussion, that's my here, I wasn't okay with it then, knowing it would turn into this discussion. And now that it's turned into this discussion, I'm still not okay with that mid-long drawn out period of instability. I need a permanent person in place.
Okay, but I mean, that, I agree with what Corey's saying, but I also agree that what we did needed to be done.
And... As, as the majority of council decided, but my point is, we do need to start the ball rolling on a permanent solution.
And that's what we're doing.
An interim position is not the same as a permanent person, and yes, people come and go. So even if we have a permanent administration, they still could up and walk out the next day. I mean, nothing, I mean, they're not chained to their desk. But at the end of the day, it is a different dynamic, and we need to start down that road, and we should've started down that road three months ago, as far as I'm concerned. So eighteen months is not an option for me.
And I just have a question about that. And, and I, what, I mean, I just, I just wanna know, if, don't you want to set Thorndyke up for success?
I do, but I need...
To be able to come in and...
But I need the person who is here for the long term, for the future, being an active part of making sure they're setting things up the way they need it to be. Making sure that they know what's going on, having, having a, someone who is by definition temporary, so to speak. Ha, you having everything up to the speed where you want, it doesn't mean that it's gonna be the, the way they want, they're gonna come in and change things either way. Working with you guys to get things up to speed is fine. Having some sort of a dual overlapping period is fine, but we need whoever's gonna be here at the end of the day, so to speak, in place...
Then we truly, truly need to revisit the budget. Because the only money in the budget, and I mean, we, we talked about this, and I brought this up during budget. What is in the budget for your CAO, CFO is minus Donna's effort.
And well, but I'm still not okay saying we're gonna wait eighteen months to start one of them.
Nobody's suggesting for me, this is comments, comments.
But, and so that's the thing too, if you wanna overlap us, then you're gonna add to the budget, which is gonna add to the property taxes, which is gonna...
I'm saying I want the person whose administration fixing the problems to be the person who I expect to be here five years from now, not the person I expect to be here five months from now, because that's the best for Thorndyke.
So I also have another question in that, um, we've set this contract up for the rate for the twelve-month period. It's separate contracts? Well, that's what the set price is for twelve months, that's what the contract was. Yes.
It was based on a, on a, on an annualized rate.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and it's separate contracts? So we start advertising, like, I, I don't know what our thought process is. So I'm just throwing this out there, like, I think that we're thinking we do need a full-time, um, CAO, but maybe we only need a part-time CFO. So Donna, I don't think is interested in working as a full-time CAO. I know, I don't know, like, I don't know what you two are thinking long-term, like, I have no idea. And if it's a package deal, like, if one goes, the other goes. If Donna moves on and we have a full-time permanent CAO, are you still interested in staying on as our part-time CFO? Like, I don't know what you guys were thinking.
Well, my thought process is, is if it's not fixed, you don't, I'm not working with somebody other than Donna, because we work very well together, and the mess, the state that it's in, like, for some, honestly, for somebody to come in, you're going backwards. Because they're gonna, it's gonna take them five months to figure it out. Like, 'cause it's that bad. Like, I don't think I can say that enough. I have never seen in my twenty-year career, it's, but it's not, they, they are, but they're related. In my twenty-year career as a designated accountant, I have never seen books in this bad of shape, ever. I can't find hardly anything.
But do you, do you think us only having, well, I guess, you guys are saying you're working more than part-time, so I don't...
Yeah, like, I, the week, uh, so really, based on twenty-four hours a week, I make not even fifty dollars an hour on a contract. I'm charged sixty dollars an hour to do bookkeeping. So when I say I don't need this job, I can make more sitting at home doing my, my other job. So, and I don't have to drive and I don't have to do anything. So I'm here because I want to assist for you guys, and it's very frustrating sometimes when, when we get the pushback because we're just trying to make this better. Like, that's our sole purpose.
Who are you getting pushed back from?
Well, from council sometimes.
In what regard?
Well, just, it's like constant, it's constant questions, questions, like, we just wanna do our job.
It is our job.
No, I understand, I, I...
And it is, like, I mean, what are we supposed to just sit back and just let you guys run with it and not ask questions?
No. That's what happens. I want you to ask questions, but it's the kinds of questions you're asking, like...
But you guys don't necessarily, you could be taking things the wrong way. If it's in written word instead of verbal word, email and text is a terrible way to communicate if there's emotions involved. And like, you guys may be taking things out of context, because I am personally have no personal, anything against you guys. I think you're doing a great job. I just am questioning whether we should be getting the ball rolling in regard to filling the interim position. That's my only thing, because we have residents pushing us. So you guys have five of us, we have a thousand people pushing us.
And all you hear from the community is that they're so happy we're here.
That's good, yes.
That's why we're here every day.
Right, but I mean, we also have other people that question things too. It's not, like, I mean, just like me, there's people that voted for me, there's people that didn't vote for me. There's people that are against me, obviously, 'cause they constantly pick on me, which, good thing, I am the person I am, because I don't take it personally. Maybe some people just need to realize that it's nothing personal at all. I think you guys are doing a great job. We brought you in, we're not double guessing the work you're doing at all. I'm just saying, it's an interim position, so, like, we do need to think about that. And I, and don't take offense to that, because I think there is a...
I don't know, there's no...
You're saying we're pushing, pushing you.
No, but sometimes it is, it's a lot. Sometimes it's a lot, like, the amount of emails that come through and whatever, it's just a lot, truly, that's all I think.
Okay, I think we're getting away from what...
And, well, we need a conversation.
So all I'm saying is, A, to answer your question, if things aren't one hundred percent fixed and you want to replace them, that's fine. Um, I don't know that I would stay, 'cause I'm here 'cause she asked me to come help her. Um, if everything was fixed, and she, I'd have to see who, who I'd have to work with.
But I mean, these are important, I think, questions for...
Well, I mean, because May thirty-first is creeping up, and anybody who was aware that the job was interim, they're curious and just asking. So are you advertising, are you hiring? And it's like, oh, well, we will be eventually, but I am not sure that we're there yet.
Yeah, and I don't think you are there yet, to be honest.
I don't either, and let me tell you what, I have to be, Tom, I have the best of the best to come here. Uh, anybody that works with us don't have to know what they're doing. And I've got a thirty-seven-year career in municipality, and I need the best of the best too. Because if I can't do what I do, I have to worry about what Cindy's doing, I can't. And, and are, are we, are we, we are working as fast and as hard as we can believe, but every day, every week, there's something that comes up that makes us spend more time looking. Uh, for example, as you're now be discussing something under my report today, you got infrastructure that we've never done right, we got another headache going on there. Uh, so there's those kinds of things that we have to take into consideration to make sure you're okay. That, that's what we're at. So, um, again, it's entirely, and again, we don't take offense, uh, I mean, that is too long, I don't take offense. Our work speaks for itself, and our relationship with you speaks for itself. But, um, at the end of the day, it's, it's council's decision.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? So I'm making certain motion, uh, so I'm gonna read that again here, to extend the contract with CFO and the CAO for September thirty, twenty-two, as per the original contract, everything in effect. Uh, council has established job description for the CAO and advertised accordingly as soon as possible. And by that, I mean, we get one, we put some together, we can, we can start advertising right away too, if that's what you want. Uh, in the event as soon as the council is reflecting, starting date would be October first. Motion to that effect.
Yes, I, I would make that motion.
All in favor? And, uh, I thank you very much, Paige, for your comments there, being very honest about that. I think we're, we're all here for the same reason, none of us are here for the money, I'm sure of that. Thank you. Uh, okay, um, four point one, work on the road came in on Forty-Ninth Avenue.
Um, thank you, worship, uh, Mr. Curley, how we speaking to a judge, we're hoping Mr. Curley that, uh, we responded to a concern that, um, there was sinkhole starting in, uh, middle of a cul-de-sac, and we attended. Uh, we took a look at it, uh, internally, we filled it, and we went back a couple of days later to do some more work on it, brought the engineers on Friday. We've been seriously concerned, and Mr. Curley, I'm sorry. You have the floor, Eric?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, it was brought to our attention about, uh, sinkhole around the storm grain. Upon investigating it, uh, actually finding down inside the storm grain and realizing that, uh, the base end of the road around the storm grain that's actually deteriorated, almost fifty feet, there's a, a decent sized gap under it. Uh, our engineer came out, uh, and said, uh, you can do a visual on it, you can get a rough assessment looking at the surface. Uh, you gotta try and put it together as a repair or just around the manholes. But it's also going to be included to the whole street. It's showing signs that there's potential, uh, extension of the, uh, the sinkhole for the road. So, uh, gonna look at it as just doing around the manholes, packing up, filling around it, whatnot, but it could potentially to go hit the whole cul-de-sac. There was a patch job done in that section prior, that has failed drastically.
Jump on one end, and I think Phil was what, forty, fifty, sixty feet away from me? I jumped on one end and he's feeling it, that's the other end. Now, that doesn't mean I'm heavy.
Yeah, the, uh, when the street sweeper went around the end of the street, he actually seen the road too.
Didn't you have a sinkhole issue or something around the manhole covered north of, that Thorndyke Family Restaurant?
Uh, no, it wasn't the Thorndyke Family Restaurant, that was actually a manhole, it was, uh, it was up the road from where we're at right now. Uh, where we had a sinkhole, we had a manhole that, uh, was, we just had when we had the previous contractor open, he was speaking. And that's one of the things I'm looking into from, uh, from what I'm learning about that area. It seems to be kind of a, a whole... It seems to be kind of a, a whole subdivision showing signs of that.
Once we get a price and, uh, engineering report, we'll come back to. We were thinking. They're filling it there nicely.
So, so right now, you got it blocked off and they're graveling it?
So, uh, what I've done for repair right now is I've actually, uh, smashed that section over the sinkhole is, uh, packed it with a full patch all the way here. I was gonna originally do gravel, but I can't get the action of the gravel for the small area. I have access to, so I actually pull patch, press it.
So how did this happen? So, like, is it bad work or is it just nature?
A little bit of column A, a little bit of column B, um, and then you add column B of, uh.
So how long ago was that cul-de-sac done?
Two.
Two years ago. So there's nothing we can go back on, the contractors?
That patch was two years ago.
And can we go back on that? Do we know about?
We have not been able to do this on track.
Really, yes.
How is that?
See what I mean? No, we're, there's no, we're not, we're not.
All of it certainly would be necrophoric and the engineer that you guys are talking about directly hired them and tendered it and oversaw all of it. So if we're saying there's no files, Jared Select Engineering oversaw every, every bit of that work two years ago, so he's the guy to ask. So if he's saying he doesn't know, that's not true.
Okay.
Done?
This is starting point.
Well, yeah, like I think last year there was support done that went through select, but two years ago, every single thing was through select.
I was.
Like, it's selected the engineering firm, he wasn't actually directly doing the work, but he almost exclusively hired necophold. So it'll, it'll almost certainly be necrophoric.
That's, that was kind of my thought process on it, but, uh, and, uh, Derek, you just triggered that, he's like, I don't know who did that.
I don't know. We'll find out.
We'll find out, we, yes, we will find out. So to answer your question, um, it's, uh, environmental, uh, generally plays, plays a huge factor. Age plays a huge factor. Um, and, uh, from what I get, from what we can figure, looking at the, at what we can see, it, it seems as though the ground is actually shifted and the pipe has, has separated from the, uh, storm drain itself. Whatever water we have flowing in is now, now flowing down the pipe and actually coming out the end of the section and washing up. Pretty much, yeah. So, and then, uh, uh, improper transition from old asphalt to new asphalt, a lot of cracking and the water seeps through that section. Makes its way down through the base.
We'll be back.
Starting point. Anything else? Any other discussion on that? We got the verbal report there on, uh, forty-ninth Avenue.
I can motion to accept the report on the lower condition on forty-ninth Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, may I have an introduction as well? I forgot. Uh, Michaela, if you'd like to, please, this is Michaela Lavelle, our new F C S coordinator. Michaela's been on the job, I believe, for a couple of weeks now and, uh, first of June, we've already got her booked into play cricket senior, so. Yeah, we're gonna play around. And, uh, Michaela is, uh, is working at the rec center and the, uh, sorry, art spa center. And she has her office there and, uh, we're doing, uh, we're looking at a needs assessment, uh, to determine what the community wants. And Michaela's already been involved with some cases already, and you can get a brief, uh, Michaela's like a day, please.
So Michaela does the point six program and point four S S S, or is it?
Uh, two days, yes, two days, three days.
Right.
Um, you probably saw her here at the rec complex on Saturday buried in gifts.
Yeah, I didn't hear.
No, I clearly saw, yeah.
By the door, she was, so, um, uh, the, uh, as indicated, we, we have Michaela here. Started with the, uh, grabbing, uh, applications for the S C S S board for June. Then July, council will be able to see them at a point. And, uh, August, September, they'll be able to start, um, with, uh, with their, that's reported. They'll have another board, council, um, council Shelley. So anyways, we, we want to get a bit of a service analysis. Uh, Michaela and I are going to talk about that, uh, on Friday to see what the community wants as opposed to what we think it needs. I'm excited to have Michaela, she's, she's gonna be a great teammate.
Can we look at activating on that C F S Facebook page again?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just like so that is whole, while I'm aside out of mind, people forget that you are there and, but the people that are on Facebook will talk and share and, you know, go talk to Michaela. So do, um, because I don't know, so I'm asking, um, so Michaela will attend, like, um, does she attend the county meetings as well or is that strictly John's thing? Is she receiving, is she gonna be training with the county?
Michaela's already training with the county, I've already been out. And, uh, he'll be back and forth with her, Michaela. Um, she'll attend, uh, the F C S S meeting, uh, with, with staffing and that, but not, not council meetings, unless she's specifically requested to. Uh, that's kind of familiar to us.
I just cause John sent me all the info and I've been posting it, so then there'll be someone new that'll be able to deal with that and, uh.
And then too, it'll be great, we can do a bit of a strategic exercise with the new advisory board to determine kind of what they want, uh, what they want to see. And that way, we should have a pretty good idea for the assessment by September. So that'll be your starting, that'll be the advisory board's starting point. Um, F C S S advisory board boards are amazing because they're the call to the community. And it's not a formal board, so to speak, but it's, like, here's what's happening, uh, here's what's going on with the community. Here's what we'd like to see for programming because, as you know, F C S S is interventive and preventative. So it is, it is not, let's just do stuff for the sake of doing stuff. And, uh, we will be, uh, building great relationships with seniors, with the church groups, with, with everybody. And Michaela's already attended a church, uh, group meeting with the Catholics, with myself and, uh, by law, the Rash, uh, regarding cemetery by law. And I'm just looking forward to your great input and all experience right with us. It's gonna be pretty exciting.
Right on. Thanks. Welcome aboard. Just go ahead.
Having Michaela working at the rec center for a couple of days a week, will that increase the times of operation at the rec center? Hopefully, it's possible to have a big four thirty code Friday as a beginning.
As we stated at multiple meetings, Kelly is in the process of hiring more staff so that we can, because as a budget, we set the new hours and it's just a matter now of getting the staff to fill those hours. So she's in, and as soon as we have the staff, that rec center will be open seven days a week.
How many staff do you expect to hire?
I'm not sure which, I can't remember what.
We just hours out of the budget there, set out of the budget there. I, I.
I don't remember it, seven to seven.
Regardless, the goal for Saturday was.
I think it was, actually, it was two, two part-time people.
Till five, yeah. One already, and I think, yeah. Yeah, it's coming. We just, we have to find people to work and that would be a difficult, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, CFO reports, five point one, tax bylaw, twenty-two oh four. Would you like to take over for this?
All right, so I did, um, give you guys a legislative and administration budget. Um, just because there's a couple of things. I got the exact numbers for the property tax and seniors and, uh, uh, diff assessments, so I updated those. And then, um, Mayor Darryl had gone, we paid the thirty-five hundred for the, um, thirty-nine twenty, but apparently there was another thirty-five hundred owing for the year that we did not participate, Darryl, if you wanna.
Yeah, well, we had, uh, it, it's thirty-five hundred a year and then we were in a real area for thirty-five hundred, it's what it was to get reestablished.
So I did add that in. It doesn't change the mill rate we discussed. Um, and then I did put, once I put in the new, um, property tax amount, um, there was a thirteen thousand dollar surplus, so I put it into a contingency fund, um, in here. And I wanted to do that just because, instead of transferring it to reserve, because this budget was made from little to no information and we may have overlooked some things. I wanted to make sure that we had a little bit in there and, um, Donna's gonna formulate a policy around that contingency fund and we will bring anything we want to have of it to council before.
We need the follow-up.
Yeah. So I guess we need a motion to amend that before we move on.
You, okay, amend that for the, uh, budget meeting.
Yeah, just to, to amend the budget, that'll occur.
All right, so just for the two things that you talked about, the contingency and then the thirty-one?
And the thirty-nine twenty, yeah.
I have a motion to, uh, add those on to the budget. I'll make a motion to add the contingency account or contingency fund and the arrears of the thirty-five hundred arrears as well as the thirty, for the thirty-nine twenty. Yeah, all right, yep.
Okay, and then in front of you is, um, the tax bylaw. As, um, discussed, I've done it with the rates from twenty nineteen um, with the exception of the vacant properties, which we left at the current rate. Um, and then added in the police levy of twenty nineteen. Um, we were under collected on the property for the education tax of sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so we have to collect that because we're just, so it's going between the government. Um, so that, that in, so all the assessments there, and then I've added the schedule A, which shows the tax rate.
And everything else is maybe as per we discussed.
Yeah, as per we discussed. So back to the two thousand nineteen rate, other than the vacant, which we backed up to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Right, right. Anybody have any comments or questions? All right, then I guess, anything else you want to say, uh, somebody else? About the person, or second and third?
Yeah.
A motion to, uh, for the first reading to pass the bylaw two thousand twenty-two oh four.
I'll make the motion to pass the bylaw number two thousand twenty-two dash four, third reading.
All in favor? Perry, can I have a motion for the second reading for the bylaw number two thousand twenty-two oh four? Motion for the second reading of the bylaw number twenty-two two oh four. Thank you, all in favor? And can I have a motion for the third and final reading?
We need a motion to allow for consent to three readings.
I'm sorry, please.
We need a motion allowing the third reading.
Okay, yeah. Right, sorry about that. Can I have a motion to allow the certain final reading of the tax bylaw twenty-two oh four?
I can make the motion to, uh, ask for allowance to the third reading of the bylaw number twenty-two two dash four.
Thank you, all in favor? And now we'll go to the third and final reading, uh, for bylaw number two thousand twenty-two oh four. Get a motion for that. I'll make the motion for the final reading of the bylaw number twenty-two two oh four. Thank you, all in favor? Uh, that is carried.
Mr. Mayor, tax notice is extended out at the end of month, okay, with CFO and C O serving consent.
Okay, so, uh, five point two, tax bylaw communication.
Go ahead, feel like.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, so we crafted the communication to residents, um, just outlining exactly the reasons behind the tax increase. Um, so the twenty-two, the twenty twenty-two budget is passed, um, just saying when we passed it. It's been a tough two and a half years with COVID and in twenty twenty, Thursby residents were provided temporary tax relief, which we know helps many residents during a very tough pandemic. COVID is now ebbing in its intensity and the town of Thursby is now back to full operating capacity, which we are all very excited about as this means refers to normal. The town is also facing challenges such as inflation, reduced federal and provincial funding, and the requirements of province of the province for all municipalities, no matter their population, to pay for R C M P policing, which are a valuable and necessary support in our community. With all these changes and pressures, we were able to mitigate an increase no greater than the rate prior to COVID. Residents will see their taxes go back to the two thousand nineteen rate in twenty twenty-two with a small addition to cover the R C M P levy by the province. Administration has retired to keep the cost down by finding efficiencies within the organization and only engaging in projects that are absolutely necessary at this time. And not burden the ratepayers further because we understand the pressure everyone is facing. The average residential taxpayer will see an increase of twenty-six percent. Um, and so for the average household, that means about four hundred and ninety dollars a year. Um, we would also like to remind you about our monthly payment option that is available to help spread the cost out over the year. And please contact that office for more information.
Any comments on that? So we're going to put that in the, with every tax notice, right?
We'll put it in the, in the tax notice, yeah, in the heart of it, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion to, uh, add the, uh, communication to the residents with their tax notice?
I can make the motion to make sure that information gets out, please.
This is, all in favor? Thank you. Yeah, and we'll force more, and we'll prove there's any camera, doing a camera. College from the gallery, Roger.
I do, yeah. So we said, our, she gets to inform this now, that's the one question I have, that our taxes are going up twenty first, twenty-six percent? Okay, I have some other questions. Was this gate part set up and used for the long weekend? Is it set up for our kids to use? Why isn't it set up for the kids in this town to use it? It's sitting in that rec center piled up in a heap. Why was it not put up for the long weekend? I'm sure if these people did know how to put it up, they could have asked Cory and Nathan to help and they were glad we set it up.
Well, we're still looking for a place to put it up.
What's wrong with racquetball court, or, or, or the outside, the tennis court, the cement there? Why are you denying the kids this stuff? You are when you don't set it up.
We haven't made a decision yet.
It should have been up.
Yeah.
Okay, what's happening to the gas tanks across the road? What, what are you finding out about them getting removed? Has this been going on long enough?
We've been, we've been removed long time.
They've been removed?
Oh, absolutely, they're.
When is our, our electric sign going up?
Working on that. The, uh, the tenants, giving back to the tenants first, all that was done on the last council, I think that was, uh, I believe it was about, there in October?
Yeah, they were removed just prior to the election.
Yeah, it was prior to the election.
I thought they were still in there, Cory, but you guys sort of pulled it out.
No, they, they were removed, but the gossip around town from people who are very ill-informed was that there was all kinds of external other issues. They, they were in fact removed before the election and it wasn't a matter of opinion, it, it, the fact was they were removed. and it wasn't a matter of opinion, okay, the fact was they were removed, whether everyone agreed with that fact or not.
And as far as the electric sign goes, there's some issues with that. First issue is that the Chamber of Commerce sign has to be removed before that can be put up there. At right now, there is no, the Chamber of Commerce has a meeting at the end of this month. They're going to be having a new council and everything, so we need to talk to them before we can act on that because of the cost of that, and it's also those signs in there. Granted, some of those signs haven't been paid for, or they have, I don't know the whole history behind it, but until the Chamber of Commerce is back in, and we approach them, then we'll go to the next step. But that sign cannot be put up until that is removed.
Okay, and another thing I'd like to know is, last council, if we wanted a financial report of the councils, what they were charging us per month, we got that, we got what you've got for non-resident monthly if we wanted. I haven't seen anything.
Here's my face stuff right here, you're more than welcome.
I want to know what meetings you've gone to and how much you've been paid for that meeting.
Well, we discuss every month where all the meetings we've gone to.
You, you also, in your report, said you went to the seniors three times in April. You volunteered there, I thought, and you played bingo there one time.
Yeah, that's what I said, and it was true, I'm not charging.
That's what we don't understand.
Because that, we have.
If it's volunteer, we should be allowed to know, this was a volunteer, Shelley volunteer.
That's what it says in my report.
Yeah, okay, if you've got something to report, but.
So you're looking, you're looking for honorarium for the month, I'm sure if you came in and talked to Mr. Wilson, he'd be glad to give you a little word for that.
As I said, any hours you put in at the senior center, it is good, if you volunteer, it is good. But putting in your report, those time spent at the senior center doesn't apply to council work because the council has no monetary value in the, in the senior.
We've been asked to put in any volunteer work that we do in our community and public relations. That is volunteer work and public relations. So anytime we go to an event, we're not charging for them, but we're meeting people, we're talking to the people, we're learning what you want to know, we're giving you information, we're giving our time to the community, and it's important that you guys know that we're doing that because it's, maybe there's some that don't do that. So wouldn't you like to know that, hey, I gave three minutes to the seniors last month, thank you, Shelley, you're welcome. Like, I mean, these are positive things, I don't see any problem here.
There, there is actually on the, like, the must be honorarium form that we built, there is like explicitly, like a section for like, public relations, where if you went to like, at a event, like you went to the parade or whatever, and you just put it down there to say like, yes, I attended, but it is actually like this separate, separated around the honorarium form that has public relations, and there is no honorarium spot to.
If I recall, you, you said that, you know, prior council, going to all these things, and there was no report on it. So we started this report, and at that last meeting we had the council, there was tons of reports in there. And we're just being open about what we're doing, not getting paid for it.
This is the first meeting I've been at that has lasted an hour. Last meeting lasted an hour and a half because we have to listen to all the reports being read.
But you watch.
Now it was twenty-minute meetings, you're paying four hundred and twenty-five dollars for a twenty-minute meeting? Lots of meetings I've been home by twenty-five after seven.
We're not getting paid just for the meetings, Debbie, we're getting paid for our involvement in the community. We're getting an honorarium to represent Thorbsby in many events throughout the county, in the community, like, we give our time.
Our job doesn't stop when we walk.
One meeting, like, we don't just do the meetings, it's involved, it encompasses.
My husband was a counselor, he gave up lots of time.
Yes, and you're saying we're getting paid for one meeting.
You're getting a hell of a lot more than them other counselors ever thought.
We're getting paid less, actually, because they rolled it back at COVID.
When Jim was on council, he was mad because they upged it to six hundred dollars when they were getting three hundred, and he was out, he was three hundred.
Irene, do you have a question?
Yes. The money gives that the candidates meeting, do they get paid for coming to the meeting or not?
They adjust their schedule, I believe.
That is correct, they're scheduled, they're adjusted, so it's a regular workday right now.
So it's time off?
No, they adjust, no, they adjust their schedules, we're coming later in the day, they work their full day, but they come in later in the day.
They like twelve to eight, they start at twelve and they get off at eight.
Starting, like, starting at ten or eleven. They work thirty hours a day, or the kids we use and stuff.
But would they?
Adjust their shift.
Yes, they work in overtime, they have a shift. And they, they come here in twenty minutes or two hours while they're working. So does that mean that they're working the ten hours?
No, they don't start.
They don't.
Andrew wouldn't start until noon today.
I'm sorry.
Because he cares how it is.
Or eight thirty, yep.
I would ask a question by some of the, do they get paid, why do they, they get paid? I don't know, I will ask, in all my sixty-five years of business experience, I've never, ever had management and meeting with them. So I said I would check for them, and if I, if it's a meeting, I will, I will question it.
You'll find, you have a question.
Yes, oh, sorry, go ahead, I didn't.
You're going to find in most municipalities that you, that you don't attend council because they're subject to their experts, and you're no special public work, or, or information service. That I don't know, the file of this, or any of the CFS that I need your expertise on. Kelly is off today, she couldn't make it, she knows recreation, it was, it is in every municipality in the province. I've been one, we've been attending council. And we have, we have to have our subject matter expertise, otherwise it's, she knows our work. No overtime, there's, there's nothing like that.
So taxes are going to be like from two thousand and nineteen?
They're going to be the same mill rate as two thousand and nineteen, so the same rate. So whether your assessment has gone up or down, they won't necessarily be the exact same dollar amount as two thousand and nineteen, but the rate is the mill rate.
The mill rate, so my taxes should go down a lot, up four hundred dollars.
Well, depends what your assessment.
Depends on what. My assessment has dropped on my house.
But yes, but so the, the mill rate's going up two mil, over two mils. So it's probably going to go up, but it might not go up the whole four hundred. I, I, I don't have your individual taxes in front of me, so I can't, I'm going to endorse this situation, but the mill rates are the same as two thousand and nineteen.
Sure, of course.
Well, on a positive note, I just want to say kudos to everyone that came out. We had a fantastic day on Saturday, you all participated, you all put a lot of work into your, your flow, into your participation. It was a, thousands of people came out, these grads alone made two thousand dollars on hammers and a hot dog. They were thrilled, and, and Taylor Park was packed, I was thrilled. The rec center was full, Shelley did a fabulous job along with all these, everybody did such a good job. So I just wanted kudos to all of you that participated and that really showed that we are well-respected, our community. Forget COVID, we're, we're on our way out.
Was there any feedback on what went on at the senior center at the corner?
Oh, yes, I was there, we, it was a great.
Oh, good.
Nobody signed up, oh, the middle. It was really, really good.
Everything was.
The cornhole, it was basically like a.
It's a game, no, I know, oh, yeah, 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 there was like.
Did we sign up for it?
Yeah, no, there was like twenty teams.
Exactly, nobody signed up for it, when they got there, well, surely going to play. So it was, it was so much fun, it was just a ball, we had, it was pretty much packed too.
Like, everything was.
Taylor Park was full, I mean, he, our, our community is really showing support and being positive. And I think we just have to keep, you know, support each other.
Considering I was pulled together in two weeks.
I know, I know, it was great, it was great, so I think there's lots of potential there.
And congratulations. I think we're just waiting for some way to add it.
Yeah, everyone was.
People this year will have to next year, and they'll know if they don't.
Well, and guess what, there was thirty-six people in the grave, like, she just, she just says, you know what, I don't think we need a grave, let's go, let's get out of here. There you go, thirty-six people, that's pretty, that's a lot of folks for doors.
Like Calmar, Calmar, the whole council came out, it was awesome, and the council.
It was great, it was great.
And we even, I think, did we delay the funeral lunch? Did the first delay the funeral lunch, I know, we were, we had a funeral coming in from Calgary, and the lunch was hosted at the senior center. We said, okay, we'll hold it as long as we can, but try not to delay you for your lunch, so.
And we're a helper.
Okay, we're a helper.
Yeah, you said those people should walk. Oh, I'm glad. Good day. I feel good, yeah.
Yeah, good thing we got by here on the street really quick, right?
Anyway, I just wanted to say something.
Well, I'm, kudos to you and Sean, we're just, have an ambulance. Irene?
In the last meeting, I asked about the bylaw of the, having requested the vehicles or anything moved of this, this group. There were two individuals, well, they were both cleared, but one of them, since he changed, and I'm questioning, does he have a business license, does he operate the business in his home? And I don't know, and that's the.
Well, if you want to, you want to talk to. Want to give that information to administration, I'll check it out.
Could you call about that last?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so we have it.
I'll be discussing it, I'll, 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 tomorrow, do you want me to phone you and let you know?
Um, no, it's, it's okay, because I'm, you, you're not, I'm quite happy about that.
I'm good with doing my job.
When, when I, when I called last time, it was about the being on the road, I didn't agree with you, yeah. I didn't mention the business license. And, and we share whether they have one or not.
Okay, but.
Okay, thank you.
You can ask me next time. Or come down here now.
Can I ask for a brief update on the bins that I've been told? Do we have any details we can release?
We do, we do.
Uh, we don't, I, I still have to get the paperwork filled out, that I'm actually going to put signs that the front is what can go in the bin, and what can't go in the bins. I will also put out a note stating that if it's something that can't be lifted over, please feel free to stop aside.
Are the doors open?
Yeah.
I can't do the doors open because that, that's how liability states, if one of those doors happens to swing or anything like that, or, or whatever happens, it actually has to go open or shut. And I went with the smaller bins, these are like thirty-yard bins, forty-yard bins, we would have had to have a lot of stuff.
Throw it over.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll throw it over.
You gonna throw a dishwasher over there? Irene, you got a question about that?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in the past, when we've had these, these changes, what has happened? Now, I don't know whether he volunteered, time for, or what, but he did an excellent job of eating with container still with the last type of material, and, and it worked out perfectly, he did an excellent job.
Unfortunately, I can't do that because we are staffed union, they can't contract that. As of the union agreement, it is something that, that people will take care of, and they can't physically afford it for our staff.
What are you saying?
You know where West Tower is?
Yeah.
And where the grass up is that I built last year? Right across the street.
So the north to west.
By the center here?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the two bins are in there, I'll have it set up, so we'll be able to take regular household garbage, harder stuff, for your spring cleaning, paints, batteries, any of that kind of stuff, I'm going to have a separate area that I would expect to have any pedal that's in your yard, that's going to be separate. We have two thirty-year bins.
And how long will they be there?
They will be there till next Tuesday.
Yeah, are they there now?
They are there now.
And it will go on the website?
Yeah, they just came to stop.
Yeah, I know, the questions are being fired, so.
We got it.
What about people that can't get stuff down there? I, if, if somebody's not able to get something down there, I guess we could probably put a poster, you know, just feel free to contact the office, and we will do what we can.
Sorry, things can be left outside the bins?
Yeah, right.
Giant bins that we can't.
And then the company that's got the bins, that if there's something that's not sorted right, am I right on this, I guess, that they would sort it?
No, this is.
Oh, okay, delay that.
What won't you take? What won't you take?
Well, that's, that's why I have the additional stuff set up, so we should be able to take pretty much anything except for radio.
Did you do your reaction?
No car body.
Used car oil or some of that.
Uh, no, no, no liquid, we're not, we're not doing liquid, this is all, this is all solid. But it's definitely batteries.
What's wrong?
We will, like, we will take paint, I can actually have a spill area set up, set up paint, stuff like that, and that stuff can be recycled.
And you'll be mounting it, or?
It'll be monitored.
It is because excellent recycle place for electronics, so it's not a problem, we don't put a bunch of stuff in the back of the truck. I imagine during this, duration of week of having it, during the hours of operation, for you guys, you sort of stopping by.
It's, yeah, it's actually a regular area that we, we pass by because of the grass flipping that we have set up there. It is an area that we want to.
When they should know.
No, let's go drop it off, but they're only going to work, there are certain work hours to put things in the. Does he not have the midnight fix? Bring the heavy stuff in.
So double A batteries or car batteries, you're acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Now, I follow service.
Well, we'll put a lid.
Oh, you're going to put a lid?
Yeah.
Sorry. All right, any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to say, like, for people that don't know, the chamber is having their AGM next Tuesday at seven at the rec complex, and they want as many people to come as possible, because they'll obviously be electing their new chamber.
And you have to be a member of the group.
I'm not sure, Carol, you have to be a member, yeah.
You said who you manage it through.
Alright, thanks so much, can I get a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn, on favor. Thanks so much.
Four, everything.
Which period?
Oh, three, nothing now. I knew it was.
They're looking at the county stuff.